I call the Wednesday, December 19th Planning Commission Meeting to order. Will we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jill, can we have the roll call?
Yes, we'll start with Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Here.
And Acting Chair Damon.
Here.
And calling in remotely from his hotel in Texas will be Commissioner Hernandez.
Chair Hernandez.
All right, okay, we have four people here. So, next item is the approval of the minutes dated November 27th, 2018. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, this is part of the meeting that anybody who would like to talk on an item that's not on the agenda, they can do that, and so therefore I will open this to public comment. Now, I have some green cards here, so I'm not sure if you're all talking about the land use plan, but if you have a green card and you want to talk about something else, this is your opportunity. Aaron, please indicate your name, and please speak close to the mic because we have a hard time hearing you.
Chris S. Bush, how am I doing? Did I get it? Okay. Hi, sorry about that. My name's Erin Tormey, I'm from 2500 Lubie Street Road in Half Moon Bay. I run the farmers market in the community, and I'm hoping to begin the process this evening of extending the permit, which usually is from April through December, to potentially March through December for next year. We've had pretty good response at that market, I think, and was told that my first step was just come and put it before you to discover what next steps I would need to take, whether or not we need to, it alters the permit that I've had for the last 16 years by adding those two months. I don't expect or anticipate any other changes, the hours and dates will stay the same, the location will stay the same. So, just wanted to go on record as saying that we're beginning that step right now, and look to you guys for advice on what I need to do next. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak? I will close public discussion, and then go to our next item, which is the study session. So, Jill, you want to take us through, and also please indicate what the process here, what feedback you want from us, where are your thoughts?
I'm sorry. Okay, better? Okay, Jill, please also go through what the process is, what we are setting out to do here today, what comments you want from the audience, what comments you want from us, and sort of what we're doing here and what we will be doing afterwards.
Thank you. Staff is happy to be here tonight for this study session, and before I dig into our presentation, I had an excellent suggestion from the audience. We understand that our audio has been difficult if we're not really careful about using our microphones, so if you can't hear us, please just raise your hand, and we'll notice that, and we'll be more careful. So, the other thing is, community members, when you come to the podium, you can pick the mic up. I know a lot of you have to bend over, you just pick it right up, and it could be easier. Okay? All right. We want everyone to be able to participate. Now, launching into our evening, we have an ambitious agenda, but we need to remind everyone that this is a study session, it's not a decision-making meeting, and we are going to reacknowledge how we work with our Planning Commission in the event that they have a conflict of interest. Under the Political Reform Act, the Commission can oversee the general plan and LCP updates. However, it comes to matters concerning specific parcels on maps, which we don't think is going to happen tonight, but if it does, individual commissioners may need to recuse themselves. So, for tonight, community, you can comment on anything that you wish to, however, when the discussion comes back to the Commission, if there are any specific sites that the commissioners intend to discuss, and they are concerned about that, we'll make sure to parse that out of the discussion so that they can recuse themselves for that portion of it. And if anyone has questions about that, I'm sure our Assistant City Attorney Heather can help us out with that. All right, launching in. So, tonight, we are going to do a high-level overview of four chapters of the Land Use Plan from your LCP update. These chapters were previously drafted in summer 2017. These are revisions of those chapters, some have been revised quite a bit more than others, and so we'll spend more time on what has changed, and we're going to be going through coastal hazards, coastal access and recreation, scenic and visual resources, and cultural resources. These chapters were put up on the website, I think, back October 30th is when they came out, so they've been out for a little while, and we're hoping that you've had plenty of time with them. We're going to end this meeting with a very high-level overview of the document that we put out tonight, but that is not a discussion item, I'll just give you an overview so that you know kind of how to navigate through it, and I'll leave that until we're done. But we're going to go through all four chapters sequentially, and have one public comment period, and we're going to kick it off now with coastal hazards, and Brittany Cosellino, our Associate Planner, will be presenting that.
Okay. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, so you've seen this chapter as part of the 2017 rollout, there have been a few significant updates since then. We've incorporated the public comment that we received from the 2017 version. The Subcommittee has done rounds of review and provided input, and we've updated the figures, and we've also incorporated recent Coastal Commission guidance. So, this year, they came out with a residential sea level rise guidance document that is consistent with and supportive of their 2015 sea level rise guidance document. Our previous version of this chapter was very consistent with that 2015 document, so we've just made some tweaks where they had some additional residential-specific sea level rise guidance. Just a brief reminder of what's in the chapter, so we open up with the relevant Coastal Act policies. These are primarily related to protecting against risk to life and property, assuring that new development has structural integrity and is built in geologic-stable areas, and avoiding alterations to natural bluff faces, cliffs, and shoreline processes where feasible. So, the hazards chapter will be incorporated into our general plan safety element. It goes a little above and beyond Coastal Act topics for that reason, so you'll see a little more than you might typically in a Coastal hazards land use plan chapter, but it will be the bulk of our safety element. The safety element will also address other state regulations, such as emergency preparation and response obligations, but to avoid duplication in efforts and streamline the update process, the bulk of that safety element will be our hazards chapter. To go through a couple important definitions relevant to the Coastal hazards chapter, they have specific meanings in the context of coastal hazards. So, straight from the Coastal Acts, coastal dependent means any development or use that requires a site on or adjacent to the sea to be able to function at all. Development has a very long definition in the Coastal Acts. To boil it down, it's the placement of any solid material, any demolition, division of land, or change in intensity of use of land. From Coastal Commission guidance documents, redevelopment means the replacement of 50% or more of the major structural components of any structure. And existing structures in the context of Coastal Act Section 30235, which permits shoreline protective devices for any existing structure that is at risk of erosion, existing means in existence prior to adoption of the Coastal Act, so that's prior to 1977. The Coastal Commission guidance documents also describes critical facilities. These are essential infrastructure networks and systems that provide necessary functions to keep the community working. So, in this chapter, we've more specifically defined that in the context of Half Moon Bay, and that includes public utilities, our communications facilities and infrastructure, the SAM wastewater treatment plant, Highways 1 and 92, the schools, and our emergency response facilities, including the fire station and the emergency operations center. So, these critical facilities are given additional allowances in addition to existing structures for hazard protection and shoreline protection, to assure that the providing of essential functions is continued to the city. So, jumping into the chapter content, you'll see on our errata sheet attached to the staff report for tonight's agenda, we noted that we'd like to bring the sea level rise section up front to complement the climate change section as these topics go very hand-in-hand, so I'll address these two topics together here. Since the 2017 public draft, a few notable differences include adding narrative about the evolving sea level rise projection efforts, including the work done by USGS on our coast, our future scenario mapping. We also highlight seawater intrusion. It's been documented at the SAM plant in the county's sea change, sea level rise vulnerability report, and we highlight that as an example of the need to further study and understand the risk potential of seawater intrusion in our planning area. We've also assured consistency with the updated Coastal Commission guidance, so policies specifically related to anticipating and avoiding sea level rise impacts. This includes citing new development, including new coastal trail segments to be safe from sea level rise, establishing that redevelopment threshold in the 50% threshold that I just went over. For when structures with non-conforming bluff-edge setbacks propose redevelopment, then they must be brought into conformance with updated and safe setbacks, and then establishing options and incentives to encourage managed retreat. Moving on to the geologic and seismic hazards section of the chapter, the errata sheet also mentioned a couple needs for clarification in this chapter, and to this figure, we've gone ahead and updated the color scheme to this figure so you can see it better tonight, but there's plenty of room for improvement still. We welcome your input. So, again, since the 2017 version, there's been a few significant updates. We've added additional narrative on erosion and sedimentation as a coastal hazard, noting the upstream effects on downstream drainages, and identifying prominent areas where intensified use has caused de-vegetation and erosion, so mainly the areas where informal trails have been established connecting neighborhoods to the coastal trail. Consistent with the previous draft, the policies require that geologic reports are required for development in areas of known hazards, so that new development can be cited to be safe over their economic life of the structure. The recent Coastal Commission guidance goes a little further into what that means and the economic life of a structure. They recommend ranges for different types of structures, so we've gone with the more conservative, higher range, in order to provide a larger and safer bluff-edge setback in those scenarios. So, that's specifically meaning 100 years for residential and commercial structures, and 150 years for critical facilities. We've also updated our setback policy to use the current factor of safety standards of evaluation provided directly by the Coastal Commission. Couple other notable changes, policies provide that shoreline protective devices that are permitted to protect existing structures or facilities really consider soft alternatives first, so living shorelines, sand replenishment, dune restoration. Overall, the intent of this section is to ensure that any new development will not be subject to hazards, including sea level rise, and will not rely on any hard armoring in the future, that right is required to be waived for new shoreline development, and that any new hard armoring provides mitigation and options for future removal, and that redevelopment is established as a trigger for removing existing hard armoring. The flood hazards section is substantially similar to what you saw in 2017. We did flesh out some narrative on the causes of flooding, and the importance of protecting our water courses and vegetation to absorb stormwater runoff and handle increased flood volumes. Policies highlight the need for updated FEMA flood mapping, encourage minimizing impervious surfaces, and utilizing green infrastructure and low-impact development methods to reduce downstream impacts and flood potential. Fire hazards, the main differences you'll see here are related to fuel modification policies, so we require fire marshal review for any new development to determine if thinning or removal of native vegetation is required for fire safety. If so, we are establishing fuel modification zones and performance standards for those zones to minimize impacts to native vegetation while providing those required levels of safety protection. Where there's potential for impacts to ASHA, alternatives such as sprinkler system retrofits and fire-resistant building materials are preferable before ASHA removal and mitigation is on the table. And I will pass it back to Jill to go over coastal access and recreation.
So, the next three chapters, we're going to present a bit less because they did not change as much, but if you have questions about any of them after we get through it, please, when you come to the podium, let us know so that we can cover it. But coastal access and recreation has been presented numerous times in different formats to the community, and in particular through the General Plan Advisory Committee over quite a few series of meetings. The committee specifically came to consensus on the Town Boulevard concept, the East Side Parallel Trail, and a number of other overarching approaches to coastal access, including increasing the capacity of the system through alternate modes, specifically biking and walking. And that has been really helpful because we were just doing a concurrent planning process with the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. The Planning Commission got to participate in that, they held several study sessions, and that was widely vetted. We're currently finishing environmental review of that plan, but updates to this chapter involved incorporating the key components of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan insofar as they were related to the local coastal land use plan. We've also done some work on performance standards, and I'll talk about those in a minute, and focusing also on context-sensitive design, and of course incorporating public input as well as the planning commissions. So, backing up a notch, we just have to remember that we have a lot of obligations pursuant to the Coastal Act for providing maximal coastal access and recreation opportunities. So, I've been focused on the circulation part of it, but this is also acknowledging recreation in this chapter. And this section of your local coastal land use plan, similar to the coastal hazards piece, it does go beyond what the Coastal Act requires, it includes quite a few circulation element topics. There's a bit of general plan going on with your local coastal land use plan, and we find that it's actually, we hope you find, but we are thinking it's going to help with consistency and a more comprehensive approach to how we do our planning. So, there's five sections in this chapter, they're listed there, and I'm just going to do some highlights on each. We'll start with public coastal access. The map has been updated to acknowledge some new opportunities, specifically the state parks has a project that they've been putting together to get new vertical coastal access at Francis Beach, so you can see that yellow circle there. The coastal access routes are specifically Highway 1, and then those red arrows connecting to the coastline. There's also formal and informal beach access points, and those are the blue stars, and again, the yellow circles are where we've identified opportunities for improvements, and those are specifically described in your chapter. Some of them are very small scale, and others are going to take more time, but it's ambitious, and if it isn't, you're not going to reach your goals. We really, we hope that you see the input of your community. They want a lot, so there's a lot in here. All right, vehicle access. This is back to the Town Boulevard, and I've been finding this really interesting since the concept was first really acknowledged by the General Plan Advisory Committee and then confirmed by the Planning Commission. This concept is to not widen the highway, not necessarily to increase capacity, but rather to improve flow and improve safety, and really create a sense of place for Half Moon Bay. And the map here reflects kind of what's been falling out of the work that we've been doing on the development chapter that just came out tonight. The Town Boulevard really relates to two portions. One is within this town center, this defined area that City Council has confirmed, and within that area, the city's already been doing some relevant Town Boulevard projects, the Gateway Project at the South, Highway 1 South Main Street, with the Gateway Entrance signage that's going to be associated with a new signal, providing significant improvements to pedestrian crossing safety, as well as the Highway 1 North Project, which is up at Terrace, that the Commission actually reviewed that two weeks ago, or a week ago, my goodness, that was just last week. You guys are busy. So, we're also coming forward with some strategies for supporting the build-out of the city, but in ways that are going to incorporate parking management and other means to reduce congestion by being smarter about where things go. Let's move on to bikes and pets. So, the key piece that really came from community input was the East Side Parallel Trail. That is a Class 1 bicycle and pedestrian facility, parallel to Highway 1. It's envisioned to go from the south end of town all the way to the north and connect at the north end to Sematow County's trails, so that it can really, really move folks along. It would be complementary to the Naomi-Patridge Trail on the other side. It's intended to open up access to Main Ridge and also make connections to transit. We do see folks with bikes and using buses, and it's pretty challenging right now out on the highway shoulder. There are other recreational trails that are included that are very relevant to the coastal access as well as recreation experience of Half Moon Bay. Obviously, the California Coastal Trail is key, and completing that from end to end is in the works. There are some additional trails, including the Pacific Ridge Trail that is part of that development, which could potentially link to other trails. We got a lot of input from, I recall Frenchman's Creek Neighborhood in particular, they would love to have some more hillside trails. There's trails also envisioned, and they are not, the courses are not known yet, but some ideas for how to get closer to some of our natural spaces, like the Beechwood property, and a connection is also of interest between Smithfield and the Coastal Trail. Of course, there are potential conflicts, and you heard us at the last study session get into quite a bit of deal. get into quite a bit of detail about natural resources. And so that's all part of how this plan works. We start with natural resources, and then we move from there to cite things appropriately. So the goals with incorporating the bicycle and pedestrian plan into this and related to coastal access was to improve connectivity, encourage alternate modes of transportation, and provide really strong connections between downtown and the beaches. That's something that visitors, it eludes them. Sometimes they come to City Hall, and they don't know where the beach is. And some folks, we've met them out on the Coastal Trail doing outreach, and they don't know what a wonderful downtown you have. So we're really interested in helping improve that, along with safety, and that's key here. Okay. So coastal recreation is emphasizing in this update lower-cost visitor-serving uses in particular. And we've been communicating with our Coastal Commission staff colleagues about this because they've had policy that's been moving forward on these different types of uses, including overnight accommodations. They've even been taking in Lufy's for development of market-rate accommodations, and they're spending them on things like campgrounds. So there's a lot of creativity going on with trying to make the coastal experience affordable to everyone who wants to come here and enjoy it. Let's see, I'm missing a couple of things. Oh, I missed a whole master plan. So the other master plan we've been working on, and Planning Commission just saw this a week ago as well, is the Parks Master Plan. The Parks Master Plan is complete, and it is being packaged up for your City Council, and they're going to see it, I believe, in February. The Parks Master Plan is really important to the coastal recreation responsibilities of the city in the coastal zone. The Coastal Act requires the city to provide adequate public parks and recreation facilities for the population. The population, we can't just say, oh, the population, they'll be fine, they can use the beach. And of course, you are going to use the beach, and that's key. But you need to have enough parks and rec facilities for all the different kinds of activities that folks would like to do in their different neighborhoods. The Parks Master Plan has been identified in this document, and so the timing was pretty terrific because this is up to date. This is where your plan's at. It's a really nice baseline. Did I miss anything? Okay. Why don't we go on to scenic and visual resources? And I'm expecting Brittany to help me out a little bit on this one. This is one of the reasons why people love to come and visit you. You have a beautiful, beautiful town, and you want to keep it that way. We've heard that in every meeting that we've held, and we've held a lot. We've been out in neighborhoods, and you've been giving us lots of input about this. So this chapter was updated to incorporate public comment as well as Planning Commission input, and we've updated photos to illustrate more of the concepts that we're trying to work on. And also, there's a graphic that has been updated significantly to indicate the different scenic and visual resource priorities that we have. So the Coastal Act framework for this chapter is that we first are assessing the positive and negative visual attributes throughout the city. And that's done in quite a bit of detail. There's tables for all the different parts of town. And then presenting a few photos just for the sake of, well, not everybody wants to read tables. Lots of people like to look at pictures. So the intent is to make this document really accessible and tell the story in different ways as you get through it. And then identifying the scenic and visual resources that need to be protected or enhanced. So for example, you have some really beautiful views in the downtown, and then all of a sudden, the overhead utilities are back up, and we kind of lose some of that view. So there's things that, there's goals over time to take care of those things. Definitions. This is a real improvement from the chapter that you saw last summer. We've got clarity, we hope, and we'll hear from you if it isn't, defining a few things. So highly scenic coastal areas are defined as natural resources and features, including the ocean, beaches, dunes, bleffs, hillsides, riparian corridors, as well as minimally developed areas, including parks, ag land, and open space areas. View corridors are also defined. Public roadways where breaks in development and vegetation allow for uninterrupted views west to the ocean or east to the hills. And then a view shed is an area with broad expanses of views towards or across highly scenic coastal areas. You have a lot of these, and you can take in quite a few different kinds of sweeping landscape views. Here's the updated figure, and the intent is to show primary view corridors, and those are in the black lines. And then view sheds are shown in some of that broader stroke shadowing. They've also identified vista points. That's a new thing. That isn't something that was in your previous, well, it's not in your LCP now, and it wasn't in the previous draft. Vista points are at Johnston House property, Our Lady of the Pillar Cemetery, and then up at that Pacific Ridge Trail that I already noted, where you can get some really fantastic views of your land as well as your actual bay shape. You can see it from there, and it's great. That's something to protect. Heritage downtown, historic structures have a quality as being a visual resource. They're also acknowledged, obviously, in the cultural resources chapter that I'm going to skirt over next. But they get protection in different ways, and they're definitely a reason why people enjoy your downtown in particular. But you also have a really cool collection of resources, including the Johnston House. Again, it pops up in almost every chapter of this document. There were policies provided to protect and enhance all of these resources, and also some new policies that we really haven't had before. There's dark night skies. Also, at the last session a year ago when we met with the Planning Commission, the Commission gave us feedback about utilities, utility boxes, all the stuff that pops up around buildings. And to be honest with you, we couldn't agree more. And in fact, we're already trying to improve our practices for how we do our plan checking for new development because of that. Community gateways are identified, and streetscape improvements, and acknowledging that a really broad range of streetscape types are important to this community. We've got a lot of neighborhoods that don't want sidewalks, and they're really delighted to have the cypress tree that is encroaching into the right-of-way. And I don't blame you. I think that's a fantastic visual attribute, as well as good traffic calming. And so we don't want to have such, so much definition of how we do some of these things that our rules don't let us have the character and the eclectic qualities that you like. So look for that when you're reading this document, and we look forward to that feedback. All right, we're on the last one, and it's one slide, but it's not a footnote. Cultural resources, you saw this in 2017, and we love this chapter. It's 11 pages, and it gets the job done. It covers archaeological resources and historic resources. The archaeological resource policies are mostly brought forward from before. They conform to the Coastal Commission guidance for how to treat archaeological resources. And of course, there's a strong connection with how the California Environmental Quality Act requires us to monitor that when we're having construction and things like that. The LCP on the books now really doesn't have a lot in it about historic resources. So this is kind of a gift of your LCP update is to get this in here. And we're still, we acknowledge the city's historic resources inventory and mapping needs to be updated. It won't be nearly as laborious as what we've done recently with the ASHA maps, the biological resources, but it's something that we really want to do. And it's, there's policies here in cultural resources to cover that. Things that we added, since you saw it last time, we added the thing, I forgot to put the Mills Act contract policy in here. That's a tax relief policy for taking care of historic resources that qualify. We added a restoration grant program. And we also acknowledged Coastal Commission's brand-new tribal consultation policy. So we were able to pick that up, and so you'll see that in there. But other than that, I think it'll look similar to what you saw before, and of course, we'd love your feedback on that. So those are overviews of the four chapters that we're looking forward to input on tonight. Our acting chair has asked us to be clear about what we're looking for. First up, we hope people have had time to read the documents. We understand there's a lot to read and that you might not have yet. We haven't set an end date for community input. So hopefully, you can maybe spend another, maybe over the holiday, if you've missed a chapter, that this presentation sparked your interest or you're concerned about it, go ahead and give it a read because you still have plenty of time to give input on any of these. Specific kinds of input that's really helpful to the Commission and us as the folks who are trying to write this is if you see something that doesn't sound right, it's not your community, we didn't describe it right, we didn't know enough, you have background that we missed, that's very helpful. But even more so the policies. They should be going in the right direction by the right amount. And I hope that makes sense, and I think we'll kind of see how the comments move around with that. And did we miss stuff? So let us know about that. So really honing in on those policies. And then we also would expect people to ask us, you know, ask questions about, what does this mean? What does this mean for my property? What does this mean for our beaches? Or how will this work? So we're happy to work through questions like that. And of course, we are available to meet with people at City Hall. We don't have to do it all here. If you need time to think, just, we'll schedule time. So I hope that helps queue us up, and we have time for clarifying questions with the Commission and then a public forum.
Are there any clarifying questions for the staff, John?
This is a really detailed document. So my first question is, how will we? Is that better? I haven't got the right coordination for this. How will we coordinate the detail in the document, or who does that? For example, there are, as I kind of glance through these different policies, there's sometimes information that's duplicated. And if there's a change, how does it get picked up if it's in two different sections? There's also some instances where there are two different policies that either do one or the other. If you try to do them both, nothing can happen. So there's a little bit of that. So who does all that, how does all that cross-checking happen?
Well, first of all, if you notice it, tell us. We are planning to do, after we get through quite a few rounds these study sessions, we're going to do a really careful additional policy consistency analysis. We're not wanting to have a lot of redundancy from policies in one chapter to another because we agree with you, it's difficult then to know which one we're supposed to be using, and if we change one, it's hard to keep up with the other one. That's exactly why we're putting this coastal hazards chapter right into the safety element. And so we're mindful of that, but that's our responsibility to do that. So if you see any of that, let us know where it is. But we are going to do another round on that. And then our attorneys are going to notice things too because they read it with a whole nother eye. And so I think we'll pick up most of it, and our goal is to get it all.
So at some point, this will be certified. And when that happens, how does the planning approval, when a project comes in, how does the planning approval process work? And my question and concern about this is if every project, if it's a small scale, large scale, right now, the projects we see have to show conformance to the requirements and regulations. And so it's already a pretty lengthy document where you check off all the boxes, even if the project is going to be, meets all the conditions. This is a lot more extensive document. And so as it comes, as projects come, how does that work? When a project comes through for approval, is it an even bigger packet? Or how, is there, how does all that work?
Well, this is, at the policy level, of course, we're going to be looking at projects for policy and conformance. But hand-in-hand with this policy update, we get to write zoning code updates. And the zoning code is going to hone in very specifically on what is required for, I assume you're talking about a development project. And so that code should be reflecting and representing the policy. So it would be similar to what you're doing now. It's just the code is going to be updated as necessary to work with these policies.
So at some point, is there a more thorough study session for some of these components? Because I'm assuming there's also going to be a lot of recycling of buildings that we already have. It's not necessarily just new construction.
Right. We understand that.
And I'm assuming this covers all of that?
Yes.
So will there be?
There can be.
March, this goes to Coastal Commission, and we're all done, and no more study?
So Commissioner Evans, we're here to find out what you want to explore. So please, you know, as we go along tonight, we'll start fleshing out next steps. You know, we know what our next steps are for one or two meetings ahead, but don't like to be overly prescriptive of it because the community brings things forth, and so does the Commission. And sometimes we need to take a pause and have another study session on a particular topic. So just, we're happy to pay attention to what you need to do with that and in the community's interest and the Commission's interest. Let us know.
And I'm also assuming, I think this is a question, but maybe it's just a statement, that in the policy statements, we're looking for enough flexibility that we're not prescribing specific solutions that maybe handcuff other potential concepts and ideas in the future. And we can go through in more detail when we go through this. But I'm assuming that's what you're looking for as well, or what we're looking for. Okay, thank you.
Let me piggyback on John's question. Maybe you can answer this from a process standpoint. Once we get through the LCP, does that go to the Coastal Commission? And do we then write zoning after that comes back? Or does the zoning and the LCP code all go in at the same time?
We're planning to have We're planning to have a bit of iteration with that. There's some obvious zoning code sections that we think we can pick up quickly and bring to the Coastal Commission with the policy document. There's other things that have, the policies are indicating, for example, there's a number of studies or a number of planning areas that come out of the document. Those things would be staged over time, prioritized probably by the city council with the planning commission. But we would like to do as much of the zoning as possible and we just need to see where we're going to land with our policies before we do that. Okay? And that all goes to the coast, that goes through you and the city council and then the Coastal Commission.
Jimmy, Johnny?
No, I want to hear the wisdom of the public now.
All right. All right, I will. Rick, sorry. Do you have any comments or questions or clarifying questions? I'm sorry, you're not, you're not physically here, but obviously, you're mentally here, I hope, so.
I'm here, I'm here in spirit.
Okay.
If you will, and thank you. So I want to thank you for the overview. And city staff has done a pretty good job of giving us an update on major changes that are happening here at a high level. I've had the opportunity to participate in the subcommittee working on this for the last year. And so I've gotten to dig into the details as we move this along. And this is mentioned in the dialogue, but I want to call the public's attention to the packet for tonight's meeting, which is posted on the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission website. Provides 60 pages of notes on the major changes that we're going through here. So if you really want to get into the detail, I encourage folks to just go online, look at the detailed information there. It gives you a pretty comprehensive sense of the changes that have been introduced into this document. So just wanted to call that out and thank city staff for that. I don't have any other comments or questions right now. I reserve my comments in writing and we can move on to public comments if you guys want to do that.
Thank you, Rick. So I'm going to open this up to public comments, but since this is a study session, I don't think we need to be as formal as we are in other times. So if there are any questions that staff can answer, I think this would be the opportunity that, to have some dialogue back and forth. Although I do, I want to caution that we have several green cards, we have people here that I'm sure want to comment. So please make sure you don't talk longer than the three minutes, right? We're doing three? Okay. So with that in mind, let's start with public comments. The first one I have is Jules Soffer. And that would be followed by?
RC.
RC Branscombe. Okay. Right. Again, please put the mic close to your mouth so that we can hear you. So that's going to be followed by Casey Branscombe.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me? My comments are on zoning and streetscapes and they kind of all dovetail into each other. And it goes like this. I live in Alita Park and Alita Park is zoned R1. And R1 means a single-family residences and you pay extra money to live in R1. And so you don't want to see a lot of trailers in people's front yards or in their driveways with people living in them and, or being rented out so that it brings down your property values and what you consider streetscapes. Now, streetscapes is the other part of the zoning that I wanted to get into. And that's streetscapes, I thought we were going to be working on making the streets look nice. And making the streets look nice can be eclectic, as the word was put out there. Eclectic, yes, but I've also noticed that where you don't have a curb and gutter, a sidewalk of some formality, people take advantage of that. And what they do is they buy a home, a small home, and then they turn that R1 into a boarding house. And that boarding house has around seven or eight cars in front of it. And if there is no sidewalk, they park those cars all over and that makes a pretty rousy looking streetscape. So those are things that I want the planning commission to think about. We don't all, we don't want to see our streets looking like junkyards. Well, even if nice cars, thank you.
Thank you. Casey Branscombe, followed by Mike Ferraro.
Thank you. I have four specific questions or comments and I'll just roll down them by policy. First though, I'd just like to get clarification about the Frenchman's Creek neighborhood pedestrian trail. There was a map shown and I think something back there about it. I just wanted to clarify that it's on the north side of Frenchman's Creek, not on the south side. Okay. And then similarly, I was interested in policy 592, the Vista Trail, just clarification of how that might impact Branscombe Farms if at all. All in favor of, you know, equestrian trails and connecting equestrian trails with others, but just need to know how it might impact us. My next question deals with policy 5-113, equestrian facilities. There's a statement in here, existing equestrian facilities and activities should improve practices to prevent and remediate adverse environmental impacts to creeks and other ESHs. Again, you know, as a significant equestrian activity in the farm, in the town and 74 acres, I guess I'd like to understand how that might impact me specifically. It sounds like you want to relocate equestrian facilities to the east side of the road and I just wasn't sure, I'm on the east side of the highway. So I guess I'm trying to understand if that's written for me or for someone else and where I fit in, all that. Next one is the issue of impoundments being caught up in this flood zone issue and risk associated with dam failures or flooding impacts. You know, licensed water board impoundments that have been there since the 1920s and are regularly maintained, there is still a hazard associated with that. I mean, I have 7.5 acre feet of water that sits right on top of the Spenderiff subdivision. So to the extent there's additional development in Spenderiff, we're adding additional risk. So I just, you know, I don't know where the Coastal Commission and planning kind of deals with that. I don't even know how I feel about it. I mean, we just try to maintain the dam as safely as we can and we have insurance. But anyway, just clarification, what is your intention around 7-54? And then the last one is just a comment that I'd like to make generally about a whole series of policies. I won't even give you the numbers because it would take up the rest of my three minutes, but around wildfire risk and how you handle vegetation in an ESHA or natural setting. And there's so many comments in here about, well, we're going to do fuel modification, but we're not going to do it in any way that affects the little animals and we don't want to do it, and we might bring in sheep and goats or something, you know? I mean, I just think, having just gone through finishing my home and living very viscerally the fight between the fire department and the environmental concerns around what we could and couldn't or should or shouldn't cut, you know, I just think, you guys got to sort something out and then just be clear and make the rules obvious and then we'll all play by them. Okay? Thank you.
Jill, do you have that down? All those, I mean, any comments you want to make at this time or wait?
Why don't we save them up? Okay, thanks.
Mike Ferraro?
Good evening, commissioners. A little over a decade ago, the city spent millions of dollars in the courts over one sentence in the LCP. It's still there. It's just it's got millions of dollars worth of legal judgments that says what it means. That's why I've always been uneasy with rewriting the whole LCP. You know, what are we going to get into doing this? How many lawyers do we need to bulletproof all this extra stuff? In particular, we're adding a whole bunch of stuff that you would normally find in a circulation element. And a circulation element is something a council can change in one meeting. It's done. But now we're putting it into the LCP and there's nothing harder to change than an LCP. And I really question that we want to put all of that stuff in there. We also seem to be a bit adventurous. I know that the Coastal Act gives us a certain limited amount to make extractions for coastal access and maybe for linear access for the coastal trail. But we've only got one section of open space and then we're done with the coastal trail. We will have coastal trail from one end of town to the other. What I'm worried about is we now have something in here about extracting easements for trails if you want to have development. And that could happen anywhere in town. I don't know what the law is on this. I don't know what we're stepping into with that. And it sounds like a really big topic to me. Okay? And not just one of, I don't know, 100 things in this thing. So that's my concern. I also know that in 2004, the city did a conceptual plan for Highway One. And that was what went into the San Mateo County Transportation Authority on which a lot of their funding formulas are based on. And it was slightly modified in 2007. But I don't really, when I look at the Town Boulevard, see a whole lot of difference from that. So the Town Boulevard to me is kind of loose. I don't know what it means and yet we're putting it into the LCP. So given the importance of the LCP, I'm a little worried, worried about that vagueness. There's a ton of other stuff, but three minutes is three minutes, so I'll have to put it in writing. Thank you.
Jill, any comments as far as LCP, how much detail, how much high level? I mean, that's a, I think, to me, it's kind of a critical question if we put too much detail. Are we hampering ourselves as opposed to high-level policy? What's the, what's required, for example, from the Coastal Commission? Are we doing more than what's required?
I really think we need to dig into these comments. There's a lot to Mr. Ferraro's comments there that I want to go through with our attorney. Yeah, we appreciate his input.
All right. Next we have Scott McVicker. And that's followed by, I think that's it, last one. So if anybody else wants to speak.
What I wanted to comment was on your scenic and visual, can you hear me? Yes. Talk across the microphone, that's an announcer trick. It was your visual and scenic resources. A habitat is a place where you can find animals. A watershed is obvious, you can trace the water. A view shed is an assertion. And what you're doing is creating a public commons, which your lawyer can explain, of undeveloped land. That's private ownership. But now someone may look across it and they have a right to look across it and that's going to add a burden to the landowner. So that was the one specific part that was troubling me. You already have the other two areas covered. You've got your Williamson Act, which naturally creates view corridors, view spaces. And then you have your protected habitat and potentially protected habitat areas that have been, if you add all these threes together, that's it for development. There's the existing houses and then there are all these spaces that have been created that, oh, no, we can't do anything there. So I would urge you not to create public commons from open space. That was it.
Are there any other comments? It's okay, you can speak and then I'll, please state your name.
Excuse me. Hi, Helen Walter. I am not a Half Moon Bay resident, but I did, I have been following the LCP update and I have two comments. I am, I am not speaking on behalf of Committee for Greenfoot Hills and I do work for them, so I just wanted to clarify that. I appreciate the emphasis on the alternative transportation that is featured. I didn't notice though, that there was any discussion of protected bike lanes. And I realize that you guys are trying to put in more trails for bicycle access, but I did want to bring up the point that on Highway One, if you did some bollards along the bike path, for instance, or some sort of separation, that it could make it safer for everyone. So I did want to mention that. I realize that is an aspect of complete streets, but I just thought I would mention the idea of protected bike lanes. My second question is on the sea level rise. It was a little bit unclear about which document you are using to, based for, on your projections. California, the state of California does have a sea level rise guidance documents that was released in March of 2018. I did not see that utilized. I highly recommend that. The projections have changed quite a bit from the projections that were featured. I realize that the, that you do have a note saying that they will be updated and I just wanted to make sure that they were hopefully updated with the most recent guidance from the state as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more green sheets or anybody else wants to speak? Note that you can always submit comments in writing, so just for, in the future, so that's something you could do. So anyway, I want to close, public comment, bring it back to the commissioners for comment and I guess, your turn, Jimmy.
Well, thank you. Just before, in the interest of expediency, maybe I'd like to give Jill a chance to address the questions that came up in the public that she feels are ripe for a conversation and then we can follow with our own dialogue.
So, I mean, I'm going to bounce around a little bit. Frenchman's Creek Trail, we really don't know what the alignment would be. So that's, that's that first one. That's just a, it was a desire and it's a project that might not happen and we do not know that alignment. The Vista Trail, again, we don't know the alignment, but I'd be happy to meet with you and show you a couple potential alignments that we've looked at. One of them, it's kind of hard to describe it without a map and a pointer, but would utilize the Pacific Ridge Trail and then come down towards Terrace and it could touch on to the city-owned Beechwood property and run across to Upper Grandview. And then from there, it can just go down Grandview Boulevard if we can't move it farther north. And I know you're right there. And so there's no line on the map because we understand there's private property and there's a lot of logistics to get through to make a trail like that work. The equestrian topic, there's been, this isn't actually completely new policy. The 1993 document has reference to trying to have more equestrian use on the east side of the highway for new use. And so that's really the focus. And really, this is, those policies are a lot more about commercial equestrian operations and not the breeding operation that we have on the east side of Highway One. So I hope that helps. We will review those wild, the WUI, the Wildland Urban Interface Policies. We tried very hard to do a two-tiered zoning for fuel modification. We found this policy in, I think it was Solana Beach, it was similar to that. We tried to adapt it to Half Moon Bay to have tiering where there's almost complete clearance within 30 feet of the structure and then from 30 to 100 feet, all dead debris and any fuel load that's piling up would be removed. That said- That said, we're all expecting to see very soon probably some increased requirements for WUIs. So, we're paying attention to that, and we may need to make adjustments to deal with that. Let's see. I think the next couple of speakers were deep into the realm of the legal world, and I don't think it's appropriate, off the top of the head, answers on those. And then our final speaker, with regards to the protected bike lanes, I'm going to take that comment and use it to go back to the presentation and cover something that I forgot to say. With regards to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, there's a lot more detail in that plan than we would ever want to put into the LCPs. So, that bike-ped plan does acknowledge protected bike lane as a potential. The strategy, though, on Highway One, we've been really focused on Class One separated lanes, and they would need to be bollarded or otherwise have Caltrans-approved spacing from roadway traffic. So, that's on our minds. We've got another place, though, where we're looking at exploring a protected lane over at Highway 92 and the Main Street area. They're used pretty extensively in more urban settings. I see them all over the West Coast now. I'm from Seattle. They've put them in everywhere. So, we're getting to know them and how they might work here, but we've been looking at them. Let's see. The sea level rise reference document, we know we are a round behind on that. And we've also, Brittany and I recently attended a session with USGS to see what they've been doing with their erosion mapping, and that has been really progressing, and it's helpful to us. So, once we're ready to revise this chapter, we will pick that up. So, we appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That covered several of the things I wanted to ask about. And I want to follow up on the last topic that you mentioned, which was the sea level rise mapping and the related topic of bluff-top retreat. I know that the city has a study that we've talked about at meetings that addressed the area to the south of Kelly. And of course, we have some illustrations of impacts fairly far north. Can you help us understand what our plan is for projections, if we have additional plans to project, across the entire beachfront of Half Moon Bay?
I don't have an answer on that tonight. I don't think it's in our CIP yet. The study we did do, and now the responsive planning work going on in the Poplar area, had all been prioritized by council, so I think it would need to be phased, kind of one span at a time.
Okay. And is the work that, well, we have done the work there, south of Kelly, is that pretty consistent with what is currently shown in the Our Coast, Our Future model, or is it a big step beyond that?
It's different because Our Coast, Our Future is not going, so Our Coast, Our Future is looking at inundation and erosion with different scenarios of sea level rise. So, for example, they have a three-foot scenario or a six-and-a-half-foot scenario. They now have a 16-foot scenario. And what they're working on is improving the engineering modeling for what those scenarios would do in terms of eating away at a bluff or at the dunes. Because it's not just all about inundation for our shoreline. We have obviously a low point where Pillar Cidos Creek comes out and near the sand plant, and so we do see inundation on our map in that area. We also see inundation further north in the northern Miramar area. But for the most part, the condition here is about bluff erosion. And so, to get back to the question, the study that the city did for Poplar is a lot more site-specific. In fact, the combination of engineers and scientists who went out there identified, I think it was on the order of about 25 localized points of erosion, and where the compaction of the soil, for different reasons, mostly because of us, and we can't help ourselves but tiptoe out to the edge of the edge of the bluff, has started to make those little cuts. And those little cuts become big cuts when the water is coming through and not detained well. So, we projected really significant erosion from those 20 or so spots, a lot deeper in than what Our Coast, Our Future could. Now, that said, we also studied how to mitigate that if we were to improve our drainage and to repair some of this compaction and re-vegetate and do some of the other restoration operations that really help with this, we'd be at about half as much erosion. And it's still shocking. It's many, many feet of erosion at the 2050, and then 50 or more feet and 2100. So, yeah, the more, the closer you get to it, it's more severe because they're actually doing that engineering analysis. And I miss saying, though, what their focus was and what they discovered in their work, that the folks who the city hired, was the impacts, at least in the near term, from the top, the compaction and the erosion from the top side causes more of the sharing off of the bluff than what's going on down below from the wave action at this point in time. That might change at some point, but that's what they found.
So, we have to get the word out to our loving cyclists and joggers who love the bluff tops to death. Okay. I want to touch on Mr. Soper's comments. While I don't think they fit precisely into the LCP items that we were talking about tonight, I understood his comments to be pertaining to the standards associated with R1 development and the potential for accessory dwelling, essentially out of a trailer, for example, or additional parking in the front yard of those areas. And maybe we can just touch long enough to confirm that we didn't envision any of those things to be conforming uses going forward. So, that was a no.
Excuse me. I apologize for interrupting. Commissioner, Chair Hernandez got this call dropped, so I'm going to call him back in.
Okay. Did you want to recess while he could stay in the meeting, or? Okay, well, wait a minute. What time is it? Through the chair?
All right. Let's get back started.
Thank you. And I just wanted to also follow up on one other question that Ms. Branscombe brought in her comments was with respect of the impact of esches. And riparian corridors, my understanding was the focus was the informal trails that run into Pillar Cidos, well, the horse trail that runs down into Pillar Cidos Creek was, at least that was a focus that I was aware of. Were there additional focuses with respect to equestrian trails at riparian corridors? Or do we need to look at that some more to be able to answer that question?
Well, I think our policy was more general. We were looking for when opportunities arise. For example, there's potential opportunities for some trails in the county. They're actually studying a bay-to-sea trail. And they want it to include bike, ped, and an equestrian. It would be a braided trail, as they call it, with separation of the use, you don't have bikes and horses, obviously, on the same trail.
Right. Okay, that's good.
So, it's a link to that.
Okay, yeah, I didn't mean to suggest that there wouldn't be opportunities for other, you know, applicable trails, but she mentioned specifically the riparian, and I wanted to touch it. So, maybe there's more there.
I'm not sure exactly.
Okay.
We'll talk, we'll speak with her.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I hope so. She also asked about impoundment and the risks associated with our impoundments. Just to be clear, I don't think we're envisioning, you know, saying, gee, that impoundment has to go or something like that. You know, if it's in use, it's in use. And if it isn't in use over a long enough time, it's probably an escher anyway. So, I don't, my sense is that wasn't the focus, but I'm glad you're nodding in approval of that. Let's see. Former Mayor Ferraro had several comments, and you touched briefly on the item that some of the master plan details for trails would never show up in the LCP. Is it premature to comment on other things relating to non-vehicular transportation that would or wouldn't be here? In general, it looks to me like circulation elements are sometimes completely subsumed into LCPs, like at Fort Bragg and Santa Cruz. I'm wondering if our, you know, if our plan, if it's appropriate for us to spend a minute an hour at some future meeting to try to clarify where we're drawing the line between what belongs in the LCP and what doesn't, and why?
I think we should have some follow-up on that because one of the reference documents we can use is the 2013 circulation element or the draft circulation element that we had prepared back in 2016. There are a number of requirements for circulation elements that are not included in this Coastal Access and Rec. chapter. For example, the street classification system is not in here. There's quite a few other things. The circulation element has a lot more detail on the overall vehicular network and the city's responsibility for maintaining the system, and quite a few other topic areas that are just, they're not part of coastal access. Our intent with this Coastal Access and Rec. chapter was to be comprehensive, but it's focused on coastal access. It's really, really trying to get to that. So, I'm sure there's a few policies that maybe they jump over the line on that, and we can get your feedback about that, and we'll talk to our attorney on that as well. But we're also trying to paint a complete picture. So, and it's hard to, that's a blurry line.
And, let's see, then there were the comments from Mr. McVicker. I'm not an attorney, and if I were, I wouldn't feel qualified to comment on that area anyway. But my understanding, if we're in a, like, we're on a road and we're looking up at the hillside, I like to think that that, you know, we may protect the view shed looking up at the hills, looking up towards the end of the road. I don't know whether, unless the road was very steeply pitched, I'm not sure that would necessarily preclude development at the end of the road. Do you have any thoughts on that, or is it premature to think it over? Want to think it over before replying?
Well, I'm not going to, I don't have any background on the public comments statement, but I can talk about what we intended in the scenic and visual resources policy, for example, the Highway One, the experience of being able to drive from end to end on Highway One and maintain a nice, long view of the foothills. That can be done with development on the side of the road, and in fact, that exists now, and that view is maintained. So, we're working on having a better sense of what setbacks and building heights are needed to maintain a contour that would keep that view open, that view in particular. Now, of course, on the west side, there are areas of the roadway where there are broad ocean views, and that's harder to do.
Of course, of course. Okay, well, I really appreciate the comments from the public, and I hope we're beginning to shed light where we don't know the answers. I hope you've given us some impetus to try to get a better insight, so I appreciate the wisdom we heard today.
John, you want to follow up?
Can you remind, can the staff remind me a little bit more about what Mr. Ferraro was talking about, the complexities of modifying the LCP compared to modifying a zoning regulation?
I think his comment was comparing the LCP, which includes the policy documents that you've been reviewing, as well as our zoning, which taken together are certified by the Coastal Commission, as opposed to the city's general plan elements. The city's general plan elements are not part of the Coastal Commission purview. And so, I think the comment was it is easier for the city to update its general plan, and if we're putting things into the LCP, I think he expressed the concern that you might have a harder time amending.
So, in some respects, we're kind of being in the cart before the horse. If we don't really have our general plan focused and in the vision of what those, whatever those visions might be, we're picking away, excuse me, picking away at some detail that's lengthy to change.
Well, so, I think we should probably pull out the draft circulation element so we can remember what the scope of that was. It's been a while since we've been looking at it. And the intent of this project was to have them as close together in parallel, or, you know, one trailing the other to the extent feasible, so that we could be doing what your first question was about consistency, just internally for the document. We also need to be consistent from one document to another. I'm not as concerned about consistency between these policies and our general plan elements. I think we have done a really good job showing consistency between the bicycle pedestrian plan, the parks master plan, and what we're doing here. And we will be able to catch those documents up to where we are with this. But I really think that the question is about how much do you put in one versus the other, and what's the best strategy for the city?
So, I can see that a lot of my comment that's a little more detail-oriented might be better coming directly to you and more of a working session rather than kind of publicly discussing everything. I see everybody kind of nodding off here. Totally understand it.
Can I trouble you, though? I think it would be really nice if, yeah, if people knew what the topics were, I think they'd love to hear what you're thinking about.
I'm just going to go through the document that we got for this evening's meeting and the kind of detailed policies. So, I'm just starting on, just randomly, on the coastal access. And I'm just kind of interested to make sure that the language, so it's talking about peak traffic control, and I have two kind of interesting questions about that. One is, I'm just going to read it, it's pretty short. Coordinate with local law enforcement to provide traffic control personnel at the intersection of Highway One and 92 or other congested locations during peak weekend use times to facilitate safety, reduce grid lock, and maintain emergency. weekend use times to facilitate safety, reduce gridlock, and maintain emergency vehicle access." That sounds great, but I, first of all, I don't think it should say weekend because there's lots of times where we have peak traffic that's not the weekend. And so that's an example of where there's, waiting here that it's kind of limiting, you know? There's plenty of times in the summer during the week where there's gridlock and traffic control problems. I'm on five point three, I'm sorry, five, I really apologize, five dash three five. Then the first word of the sentence says coordinate. And I'm wondering, well, who is that? And how does that happen? Or do we, is it a city staff? Do we have a committee? Is it the mayor? We have right now the sheriff's department, maybe in the future we have some other kind of agency. And there is, as far as I know, there is no real plan. You know, when you go to Disneyland, they've got little things, and they switch gates around if they've got an overload of people. And as far as I know, we don't yet have any kind of, the inevitable gridlock that we keep getting. So that's, it's that kind of detailed descriptions here that I think don't have enough definition. And I'm not sure at what point that definition needs to happen. Some of these, again, I think I don't need to talk about in public here. I really appreciate five seventy-seven. It's the first time we're seeing visitor-serving transit hub. Thank you very much for getting that in here. Even if it never exists, if we don't plan for it, it certainly would never exist because we'd use up the property. I'm also concerned that there's some detailed descriptions of EV, that's electric vehicle facilities, that we're requiring EV charging stations. I think they're great right now, but the time will come when maybe my watch charges cars. I mean, we don't, I don't necessarily think we need that, be that specific in this kind of a document. We've had plenty, and I appreciate hearing from the community. It's still of interest to me that we've done quite a few community meetings over the last three years, so we've gotten everybody's ideas. And now we have kind of an assemblage of the ideas, and it seems like we're trying to filter through the difference of ideas and what we actually need for a general policy. And that seems like where we are. So for example, the discussion about equestrian trails on the east side of Highway One, you know, it must be more than one trail because it couldn't be horses and people and bicycles and all at the same time. And then also, what facilities are creating the ability to have horses there? You know, what, you know, in the private sector, are there ranches already that have horses where people can rent them? If, because they're not going to be going across Highway One or Highway Ninety-two. So I think that's, I liked hearing that kind of input from our public. There are some contradictions around things like parking and parking standards and when it's required. Tonight is not the night where I'm going to be making suggestions about what we do with parking everywhere, including residential districts. And we've had some of those conversations. Thank you in the Cultural Resources Act for looking for funding ways to continue to keep and restore buildings that are, will be ready to recycle if we don't keep them maintained. You know, the Oddfowles Building is, what, one hundred and thirty years old, and, you know, needs help and needs work and needs money, and it's a private group, but, you know, and there's, that's just one example of lots of privately-owned properties like that that add to the, I guess what we all call the visual character of the place. And that leads me, and then under the scenic and visual resources, I get kind of stuck because there's talk about openness and visual experiences. So I see in our document that we, that when we're dealing with what I call stuff, you know, stuff is just anything that we put here that wasn't, wasn't here two hundred years ago. And so, and I think it's pretty easy to kind of figure out what to do with that and kind of have regulations if there, if bluff is eroding or if a waterway is overflowing or if we're going to build a park or a building and what it looks like and what it should block or not block. But then there's these sort of emotional things that we're also trying to talk about, and those are what I see in this visual resource. So what I see when I look at something, I'm going to get a response to it, and what someone else sees is going to be different. And I don't know how we are going to define a term like openness. I don't know what that is. And I don't, and I think we need quite a bit, if we're going to have zoning regulations that talk about protecting visual experiences and the sense of openness, we need to spend a lot more time trying to define what that is. Because, you know, I know in fashion, I only talk about shoes, or I get in big triple, you know, if I start saying anything else to anybody, because, and I don't mean to make light of it. So for example, in nine point, so I'm in section nine, nine point two, visual quality, says preserve and enhance the unique visual quality that contributes to Hefron Bay's coastal small-town character, including its open expansive views from the coastal terrace to the beaches, bluffs, ocean, picturesque landscape, and foothills. Next one down, nine point four, require all new development to be cited and designed to ensure visual compatibility with the character of the surrounding areas. So we don't have much, we don't have much definition about that. If it's visually compatible, that means if we have an ordinary-looking neighborhood, are we going to make more ordinary-looking stuff? So I think we're just getting into very difficult and precise language with imprecise areas. And my main concern of all of that is if we have these contradictions, it's going to be loopholes that prevent us from doing anything. Even if, you know, if you don't brush your teeth, they're going to fall out. And so we, we need to take care of what's here, and there is going to be a lot of recycling. Maybe some of you already tried to do it. You remodel your buildings or homes. And we're going to face, in the lifetime of this, which is twenty to forty years, most of the built environment is going to be recycled one way or another. And so I feel like this ambiguity of this concept of compatibility and visual and openness, we need to work a little bit more on that definition. I think it's great to identify heritage downtown. If we're going to be talking about sign ordinances there, we ought to be also, I don't think that belongs in the LCP because there's signs that are on buildings that were a hundred years ago that looked great. You know, this is a big giant sign on a building, and it looks great on a really old building. So we're getting into that specificity here. I'm nervous about that. And then more particularly, we talk about lighting. And I'm concerned that, so, and what we say is good because we're talking about no glare, and we're not having, having appropriate fixtures, and we're not lighting the sky. And so my question is, if it's only new construction, do we have a way to retroactively come back and deal with that? For example, specifically, we just built a beautiful new library, and the street lighting that they put up as part of that project is fantastic. You know, the, the streetlights in front of that library, they're the right height, the casting of the light is good, and you don't see the bulbs from anywhere else in the neighborhood. Now, they just put up new streetlight bulbs along Prarisma Street and Correa Street, and they're enormous glare. One, one light fixture lights the whole block. And, and so standing anywhere on the block, there's this, you can see better on the ground, it's great, but you also have this glare from, so if I'm looking across the street, all I can see is the glare from the light. I can't see the houses across the street. So how do we, and how, how is that decision made? Who makes the decisions? How do we start controlling that? If we're going to have a written ordinance that says we want to do that? So, and then there are what I call outdated concepts. Talks about clustering buildings, the concept of complete streets. All these are just kind of unproven concepts that are suggestions and ideas of ways to build things. There'll be other new suggestions and ideas, and I think we shouldn't be identifying one as the way to do something. We should be just saying whatever our goal is for each one of those sections. So specifically, like complete streets, clustering buildings, if you've got steeply sloping site, we have almost none of those in the city. So there's a lot of references in the document. And I'll get more, I think, like I said, I won't, and we've, and we've already heard from everybody here and our other planning commissioners that these view sheds that are kind of created by streets that are already here probably need to be a little more specific about exactly what those are and what we're trying to do with those. For the vista points, the cemetery is a Catholic Church's property, so I don't know that we can even say we should be calling that a vista point. And the Johnson House is great because the city owns it. The view corridor, the views, if you haven't been up on the hills east of Highway One, unbelievably good views. We used to live up behind the high school, and people that grew up here would come up to where we lived, and they go, I can't believe this view. So if you're just up a couple hundred feet off, you know, in elevation, the challenge is how do we get everybody up there? You know, do you drive your car up there? You know, if you, if you're pointing out this trail, you know, that, how does it become a view corridor or a view spot? If, you know, you park cars, you know, who's the view for? So I think the idea is great, but I think identifying the sites is risky without it being really well thought through. And I think, everybody asleep by now? Good? Thank you.
John, thank you. Rick, it's up to you, if you're awake.
I am very much awake, and I appreciate the comments that everybody has shared here. I, I think I'm comfortable with where we're at now. I've heard everybody else's comments. I will submit all of my comments in writing, but I'm still here. Thank you.
All right. I think there were, what I've heard, mostly issues that I were, that I was going to cover were talked about. One of the issues that came up earlier, though, is of concern to me. And that is, given the campfire just a few months ago, is we certainly have a lot of houses that are relatively near eucalyptus and other trees. So there are issues there about what kind of a buffer we need in the future. I'm not sure if insurance codes will require that, or if the state will actually require. And we have some conflict there between environmental areas and where houses are. And I'm trying to kind of figure out, you know, how we put something down that ensures we're in balance here.
Through the chair. So a couple of comments. First, I wanted to touch on a couple of the, I appreciate, John, your comments. There are a couple I wanted to touch on. I might see them a little differently, but, you know, I, that's not to say I don't think you're, that I dismiss your thinking about it. With respect to charging facilities for electric vehicles, my goal here is not to be prescriptive and say, you know, as there is, the sun will rise tomorrow, there will be charging facilities in every, you know, a chicken in every pot and a charging station on every lot or something. But, you know, we are challenged to provide coastal access. A lot of people use electric vehicles. Coastal access is hard if you have an electric vehicle. So there's a need for us to address that. It is true that the technology evolves, and so, not trying to pick the winners here. I'm just trying to, you know, and if there's a way to boil the concern up so that we can make it more general and still meet the need, I'm certainly open to that and hope staff will give that a little thought. With respect to your observations about the vagueness of some of the visual qualities, the openness, I agree that it's inherently subjective. We have a lot of subjective building standards, and I'm not sure, you know, it makes sense to try, you know, visual massing, articulation. We have notions of these things in architecture that are, you're much more familiar with than I will ever be. And I, I'm content to trust that you will have the judgment to, you and your colleagues who are architects, will help us understand how to address those concerns, and I will admire your insight into that. My sense is the public has a pretty good idea of what openness means. I think they recognize it when they see it. And the fact that we can't put square meters and, you know, relative height to width dimensions doesn't mean that there's not something that we should be designing to protect. In fact, the Coastal Act calls on us to protect in ways that use language that is rather vague. Similarly, the concepts that you, of the concepts you mentioned, that, you know, again, they may seem outdated, and, you know, everyone's opinion is, you know, who's to, that's a matter of taste, and I can respect the difference. I believe the principle of clustering development is actually another concept that's called out in the Coastal Act. So there are, you know, we may have some discretion. There are also limits to our discretion just because of the context in which we're working. And I do appreciate Wes's comments about, you know, our increased awareness of fire hazards and the fact that we are dealing with the effects of climate change, and we need to understand the importance of public safety. And that calls for balancing with environmental protections. We have to be smart about that. I think the foremost aspect of this is when we're, the policies that pertain to the sighting of new development. And so when we talk about putting something next to a eucalyptus grove, if we have lot depth that says they don't have to be that close, we should be doing something about that. On the other hand, I don't know if you caught it, but there was a recent, a couple of reports of the retiring chief of Cal Fire, and he was saying that in some ways, the materials you're working with are restrictive. In other cases, where you put the building has a profound impact upon its safety. So if you're in the wrong spot, even if you're a hundred yards away from the eucalyptus as opposed to fifty, the embers can blow over onto your doorstep and accumulate there until the house catches fire. And the buffer didn't make a heck of a lot of difference. So our thinking needs to, you know, I do think we need some fresh thinking, but it's not just, I don't think we should be thinking strictly in terms of, well, we need to clear more vegetation. I don't think that's the whole, the whole product for safety here. So I do appreciate your comments, and I just, I wanted to touch on those in response to the thoughtful comments that you both had. Thank you.
And Commissioner Hernandez also has a question. He was just wanting to jump in as well.
Let me do a little, one little follow-up before Rick comes in. I appreciate all of that. I forgot to mention that it seems like we're spending a lot of language about allowing the public to get here and to get to the beaches. We have almost no language about how they get away. And where does that, where do we put that language?
Thank you, John. Rick, it's up to you.
I just had a question for everybody. One of the speakers during our comment section mentioned the sea level rise that was updated in March twenty eighteen. I think it's Helen Walters. I just wanted to just ask clarifying question, the city staff, are we looking at that revised document? I didn't hear that from where I'm at, if we're addressing the revised version that's come out.
We're using it now, but it is not included in your draft. It's not going to change much for any of the mapping that we have at this point because of the bluff condition. It really only changes the inundation levels. And again, we, that's, that's not our primary, our primary issue. We're eager as staff to see future rounds of work and engineering done by USGS and what they're learning about our bluffs. Anytime there's Anytime there's a bluff erosion event like we had a couple of years ago, we're reporting it to them so that they can come and learn a bit more about what's going on here.
Rick, you have anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments for staff? I think this is kind of one bite at the apple. Again, I want to encourage people, if they have any other clarifying questions or issues they want to raise, to do it in writing. Timing wise, give us an idea of when we might get a second bite on this.
So my intent tonight was to have a very nice conveyance cover memo on your brand new development chapter. And I did not have time, so this is your memo. And the development chapter has been completed. It is a, it's your first public draft of this, this really revised document. It has been posted. It's online now. We just put it up and the commissions, commissioners have their, their copies. It's, it's chapter two. And chapter two is not on the agenda for discussion, but I'm going to spend just a moment acknowledging what you're going to find in there as sort of a reader's guide because I, I didn't give you that memo and I apologize for that. So, and first of all, we want to remember that this whole project and, and process started with a general plan advisory committee who put together six guiding principles and those have continued to be laced through the work that we've done. You heard all of them presented in one way or another with these first four chapters that we talked about tonight. But we're looking for natural resource protection, hazard avoidance and maintaining coastal access, improving it and protecting all kinds of other coastal resources, including visual resources. At the same time, your city council has priorities that they've maintained and in particular, affordable housing has been at the forefront. That is one of their top five priorities and has been for several years, which is why we engaged in those community conversations about housing. Those are really big workshops that we, that we put on, two of those this year. They also prioritize the Parks Master Plan and looking for a community park and that this community is resilient and sustainable. So in your, in your new chapter, you're going to find a, we hope, you see it as easy to navigate with the background for the framework. There is a series of land use designations and a new land use map and whole section about established neighborhoods that you really don't have now. The town center is really the, kind of the cornerstone of, of the concept for the document. You've seen that mapping of it. There's really sort of an approach to focusing on what's, policies are relevant to the town center versus what's outside of it. This was presented a year ago. We had a rubric where we were working with Charles Lester and we had a study session with the commission, kind of going through all the different kinds of land uses and how it worked in terms of where things should be facilitated, where development should be basically maintained and allowed and where it really would require a lot of careful attention because we had challenging, challenging situations otherwise. The plan developments have all been updated and there are three new PDs that await you. I think, maybe there's four. There's several. Sections, policies for urban reserve, open space reserve, designations and our various types of commercial businesses. So the most significant updates are, you're going to find them on the map and the PDs. And there's a number of new types of programs that we have not had in, in our document in the past, as well as new land use designations. And they're all called out very specifically as, as being new, including a priority housing overlay. I highlight that because it's, it's quite a, quite a different thing and we're eager to tell you more about it. We'll have updated build out projections. You're not getting build out in this tonight. We have been working on it. We, we have really firm numbers and yet this is a tightly woven plan and we need to make sure that we've, we've looked through every implication and we're also studying public works, utilities, capacity, and we're going to run some traffic metals on it as well. So we're planning to give you a very complete picture of build out and I'm sorry that it, it just wasn't ready. That's your map and that's the town center. It's been divided into three pieces and you will read about terms that we've, we've talked about quite a bit tonight already. Heritage Downtown is, is the one in the middle, for example. Neighborhoods and plan developments. And this is, these are a planning tool. There's a series of eleven diagrams in the document illustrating the plan developments. They are meant as, really as planning tools that frankly, we were using to make sure that everything that is planned in a plan development fits appropriately to be a really good development or a good neighborhood. And so they were so helpful to us that we thought you might like them too. So we, we'll talk more about those later, but this is a, a bit of a surprise. We don't need to include them in the document later, but we thought this draft, it would be instructive for, for people reading it for the first time, just to have the graphics. And that's very high level overview. This is on the plan hm b dot O R G website. And we are going to dig into it on January twenty-second at, at our study session that evening. We'll also be covering agriculture chapter because agriculture chapter is, is really a, it's, it's its own little discussion of land use and it, it's part and parcel with, with the development chapter. We're eager to hear your input. The development chapter is a starting point. We know that we're going to get all kinds of feedback and we're looking forward to it. Our intent was to give you something that shows our best effort at really responsible planning and the kinds of trade-offs and choices that are, that have to be made with that. With our subcommittee support, we've, we've been able to do that. But we're, we're absolutely anticipating lots of sit-down time with folks. We're welcome to it. Please come and talk to us. And I think that's, that's our key milestone is January twenty-second to get back here and, and dig in deep on the development chapter. And I think, is that my last slide? Yes.
Through the chair. I, I think it may have fallen off one of the slides, but in, in the list of different land uses, one that I didn't see on the list, but I know was there, was the new open space conservation land use designation. And I just wanted to mention that because it came up in the G-PAC and it's a, I think it's another aspect of realization that's worth pointing out.
And I apologize, I skipped over my notes. The open space for conservation designation is new. There is a new city parks designation, a new agriculture designation, which is not applied, it's just, it's available. And there are two overlays. One is that priority housing overlay, which is intended to support farm labor housing and other types of housing in a very targeted way. And the Green Belt Stream Corridor has been proposed as an overlay so that it can be flexibly expanded or retracted according to the extensive riparian corridor and as opposed to just being its own designation on a map. Let's see. Thank you for that and I, that, that was a G-PAC consensus item, so, so thank you. And I'm just going to see if I missed anything else. Well, I guess, I guess the sum is, we hope that when you're reading this, you see the wisdom of the community and we expect you to bump into things and, and correct our course. So we're, we're eager to, to keep working with, with you. Thank you.
Jill, thank you for the update. I guess you're just on the floor because the next thing is director's report. So anything else you'd like to report?
I have a brief report, so your next meeting will be January eighth. We've decided to stay in here, in the EOC until we're a little more ready with the sound system over at the library. So we'll be here that evening. We have a, we have a big agenda with lot line adjustment, a use permit, a highway runs south, gateway and signage coastal development permit and a study session for the Pillar Point RV Park focused on a new public restroom. And then I just wanted to mention, I've been paying attention to training opportunities for the commission. I've sent you an email on a few and I just bumped into another one for San Mateo County. And I'll, I'll send it over, but there's a, a planning commission training on, it's like January thirty-first and the, it's a, it's a group of county planners who are putting it on and I think one of the topics was how to make a good finding for, for planning commissioners to, to think about how, how you do that. So it looked great. I'll send that over tomorrow. And that's all I have. And that's our Happy New Year, kind of end of the year meeting. Thank you.
Before we move on, we lost Hernandez again. We're going to call him in so we can finish.
We could adjourn. Okay, how about, do I get a motion for adjournment?
All right, move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. I know you've got all this. So there's these four new PUDs. So. One would be the twenty-two acres, I guess. So there's a PUD being created out of the unusable, this is the little piece of, of Glencreagh and the, and the, the undeveloped portion of Grandview, the, the, the plan
is not to create more building entitlements.
It is.
Except for the, he wants that, the ten, what do you call it? Priority housing.
City, I think it's just the mayor. Okay.
So that was one.
Okay.